I'm in charge of the prayer and the pledge of night, so if you would, please bow with me for a moment of silence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council meeting, October 22, 2009. First, we have our consent agenda. Council members, you have the consent agenda in your packet. If there's any item on there that you would like to discuss at this time, feel free to bring it to our attention. We can do that. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Colorado Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for October 1, 2009. It was a regular meeting. You have a copy of those meetings in your package. If there's any additions or deletions, we will entertain that at this time. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Colorado Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. At this time, we consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing. We have two items. First is the annexation study of 12.64 acres located north of Wilkinson Pike and west of West Park Drive. Welcome, Mr. Adebola.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bratcher. During this regular meeting on October 7, actually, I misdated my letter, on October 7, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission considered and recommended approval of the following matters that will need to be scheduled for public hearings. And then first is an annexation study for 12.64 acres north of Wilkinson Pike and west of West Park Drive. The second is a zoning request for approximately .25 acres to be rezoned from RM16 to CL along Greenland Drive and Old Las Casas Road. Additionally, Mayor Bratcher, I have laid out on your desk a second letter, recommendations from yesterday's Planning Commission meeting, which actually is sort of a companion with the item A that was in my first letter. And that's for a zoning request for property located along Gresham Park Drive, south of Wilkinson Pike. And there'd be 10.3 acres from OG to CH, 5.54 acres from RS15 to OG, 2.95 acres from GDO2 to GDO1, and to remove 11.62 acres from the Battlefield Protection overlay district. And I kind of wanted to bring this up tonight because two of these could, if they're scheduled for public hearings the same night, it'd probably be a convenience to the participants who may be interested in speaking to you.
That's a good idea. Those who may be here on one, since this is very close, it will be very convenient for the public. Council members, do you have any questions since this was later on our desk? And I'm concerned this, and if not, we will look to Ms. McGannon for a date.
I suggest November 19.
November 19.
Move we set the public hearings for November 19.
Second.
Motion, second, to set the public hearing for these three items. Colorado Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Adebola. Next, consider recommendations of the Assistant Water and Sewer Director with regards to acquisition of easements for the Wilkinson Pike sanitary sewer, Southwest Regional Forest Main, and Lower Lidle Creek sanitary sewer project. You have a copy of that in your packet. Welcome, Mr. Gore.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bratcher, members of council. We have, we are under contract with Florence and Hutchinson to do the appraisals for approximately 27 or 25 properties for those three projects. They are gathering the appraisals as we speak, and we would request permission to make offers based on the appraised value plus 10% if there's voluntary conveyance. I think this is our standard practice. We just want to be able to move forward as those appraisals come in. They typically come in project by project. One item I would like to clarify, on the Wilkinson Pike project, there is some right-of-way acquisition that's also necessary to accommodate the widening of Wilkinson Pike if and when that occurs. So we would also request making an offer to acquire that right-of-way as well, along with the sewer easement.
Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Gore concerning this proposal? I will entertain a motion.
Move we approve the recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Are you any questions from the council? Colorado Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Gore. Next, we consider recommendations of the city engineer. We have three items for Mr. Griffith. First is the property acquisition of Haynes Drive improvements, and the second one being appraisals and property acquisitions for Joby Jackson Parkway, the extension. And the third item is construction testing service for the Chamber of Commerce Business Center. You have a copy of all three of those in your agenda. Welcome, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bratcher, and members of the council. The first item I have for you tonight is property acquisition for the Haynes Drive improvement. Recently, the Tennessee Department of Transportation has provided us guidance, or guidance to local agencies regarding right-of-way acquisition. Specifically, their guidelines now allow for acquisition of easements and/or right-of-way that totals less than $10,000 per parcel without the initial need for an appraisal. The city would complete the attached nominal payment parcel document, which is included for your review, and then based, and then based on the review of the, or complete it based on the review of available data such as similar sales, nearby appraisals, or assessed values. The property owner would then be offered the valued amount plus 10%, as is our normal procedure. The property owner will be asked for a response within a month if the owner can substantiate their offer as factually wrong, such as errors in the taking, or if they would, then we would offer a revised value. If the owner does not accept the offer or requests an appraisal, then the legal department would file condemnation with the actual value taken, deposited into court, and appraisal would then be completed. We recommend this acquisition procedure on this project and on future projects. The process should reduce the acquisition time due to a reduction in the number of appraisals requested, and will eliminate $2,000 to $4,000 per parcel for the city as being paying for the appraisal services. In general, we found ourselves, by following TDOT's guidelines, we found ourselves paying $2,000 for an appraisal that the property value may be buying maybe $500. And so they, I think, the Department of Transportation saw, saw a better way to do it and has given us this latitude. The first project that we recommend using the outlined procedure on is an improvement to Haynes Drive from just east of Regency Park Drive to west of Suffer Springs Drive. I've included a site map which indicates the limits of the project. Our consultant, Hudson Steel, is to determine the amount of right-of-way and easements required for the project. Subsequently, we've received a, requested and received an appraisal by Florence and Hutchinson for one of the properties. Using the completed appraisal, a value was determined for the remaining four properties. I've enclosed a table outlining the value of each of the five properties that's going to be affected by these improvements. We propose the offer, we propose to offer the owner by letter our valuation plus 10%. And included with this, with the offer will be the appraisal or the NPP document for the owner's review. This project is basically just a short section of Haynes Drive. We've gotten several complaints, requests, if you will, for nearby residents that there's quite a bit of accidents in that, in the S curve there. And we've also, and actually also got it from police officers also in their reports. So we wanted to, to take this opportunity to really provide a safety project for the, for the residents and for the motorists that drive that every day by doing a couple of things, by adding shoulders, a four-foot shoulder to it, and then adding super elevation or embankment, if you will, to the, to the curves, and then also softening the curves. So we, we think this is going to benefit, be a good short-term project. And then once that's completed, the street department also has the project on it, or the entire length of the roadway from Memorial to Thompson Lane, to resurface that. And obviously, the condition of it's deteriorating, and we want to be able to take care of that as soon as possible. With that said, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Council members, are there any questions concerning this?
I do. Vice Mayor Bratcher has some questions for Mr. Griffith. Mr. Griffith, some of the residents in this area have addressed some concerns to me about that if we're worried about accidents out there, that actually straightening that curve out is actually, and widening the road is actually going to encourage the amount of speeding and actually just sort of make it like a straight-out raceway. And then coupling that with the fact of how close up into some of those yards the road's then going to be, and the suggestion they have made is that instead of straightening that curve out, that we, we have some strategically placed stop signs added along that roadway instead of straightening out this S curve.
And certainly, that's, that's something we have considered. Haynes Drive being the predominant movement through there and carrying quite a bit of traffic, if memory serves me, about 8,000 to 9,000 cars daily. It, we would prefer that movement, that traffic to keep moving in order to expedite traffic through there. We're not, if you look, and I'll be happy to share with anyone the actual construction plans, we're only moving the, straightening out the curve a very, just a very little. I think you'll, I think the residents will see and the drivers will see that the biggest improvement that we're making is super elevating the road, which most driver, most drivers have a comfort feeling as far as whenever they actually go into a curve where the, you have the super elevation that actually holds the car on the road as a part, as opposed to letting it to slip off. That, and with the, with the addition of the shoulders also, there's really no shoulders on it, and the road has been surfaced over time, so there's a little bit of a drop-off off the shoulders. So really, it's, I think, because my, my fear was the same as yours, that we would just, we would be a detriment to the neighborhood by straightening that curve out too much. But I was really pleased with the, with the plans that Hudson Steel came back, that there wasn't that much of a change in the curve, but really just more changing the geometry of it and adding the shoulders to it. And I would add, we are adding a, we are adding a left turn lane at both Suffer Springs and Regency Park. We have quite a bit of backup there. And then we also, especially in the Regency Park area, a little concerned about rear-end accidents coming out of the second curve.
Have those designs been shared with the neighbors in the immediate area?
They, they have not. We, that, Haynes Drive itself is part of a, is part of an overall project that's on our future list for some time down the road. We were in a process of developing those, those plans, and we really felt like that we knew the neighbors had concerns about the project being throughout the area. So we wanted to concentrate on, do something that we felt like would be good for the short term, which would, which was straightening this curve out. Before we got too far along with that project, we basically, we stopped the, we stopped the design before it actually got to the, to the, where we would have a public meeting. But I'd be more than happy to schedule a public meeting with the residents and certainly be able to show them exactly what our plans are. I will add, we have staked out the, the right-of-way that was, that's required for, just to kind of give them a visual of what they have in their yards.
I think we could probably agree that as long as this has been debated over the years, it's probably not a real, it's not something that has to be done tomorrow, so to speak. I think I would feel more comfortable if, if you had that meeting with the neighbors who are most affected by it and address those concerns and see if there's a comfort level with them with the way the design is. Because I think you and I both can agree, if that's not done right, there is going to be concern. If people are speeding where there's a curve, if it's opened up, you're really inviting more of that.
The hope would be that it could be done in a more safe fashion, but certainly, people would drive to, some people would drive to the utmost limit, so that's definitely a possibility.
Yeah, so I would really, and the others may feel differently, but there's no sense of urgency about this project, perhaps deferring taking further action on it until you meet with those neighbors and see what their level of comfort with the design of it is before we take any further action on it.
I, I.
And the designs that Hudson still may ease their comfort, or their concerns may still be the same, but at least we'll, we'll know that at that point.
Sure. And we have, we've met with some of the, of the residents that actually that's affected by the project, some of the concern that I've heard, just people that live further down the road. But certainly sending a notice out to all the residents, we have sent a couple of notices out to them as far as the survey, but sending a notice out as far as actually letting them see the plans would, that wouldn't be a problem at all.
Thank you.
Mr. McFarland.
Mr. Griffith, my question is, I know we've talked about this with several different council members, and I know three or four years ago when we discussed the Jarnet Lane and we were looking at long-term, you know, working our way down Haynes Drive, and no one likes to talk about a wide, a road widening project, especially the neighbors on that road. But at the same time, I know that the neighbors, when we widened the Jarnet Lane, the five lanes were not happy with that. And to some extent, you know, we've got a five-lane road that dead-ends into a two-lane road. And we, I know we've talked about this, and we're going to pave it and do what we can, but the fact's still there, it's a dangerous road. I mean, when I see people ride bikes or try to walk on that, on Haynes Drive, I sort of cringe riding down the road. We've got Battleground now that has picked up a lot of the Segal traffic, and trying to make a left on Haynes Drive in the morning out of Battleground is tough. During the day, trying to make a left off of Suffer Springs Drive on Haynes Drive where this curve is, is extremely dangerous. And then couple that with the other traffic that we're picking up down on Regency Park Drive, where people are trying to go to Segal in the morning and then leave, leave Segal Elementary on Segal Middle in the afternoon. Are we, what do we have as a timeline of talking about engineering and starting the process of, you know, I hate to spend all the money that we're going to spend to widen this, and we're not talking about sidewalks and some of the things that the area needs to have.
Well, certainly, the, the improvements that we were, that's planned for this particular section, they were designed to be able to go, to be, to be extended on to a future project, basically just adding, really through there would just be adding curb and gutter to it and adding a drainage system. I think we do, there is a lot of interest, a lot of interest both ways, and a lot of interest in the project never being completed, and a lot of interest in, in the possibility of doing it. I think staff has, has decided what's more appropriate is to, is to re-study the roadway to, it currently is not on our 2025 major thoroughfare plan. Be appropriate to go through the Planning Commission, have feedback from the residents that live there when it's more in a, more in a study phase, and basically look and see if, you know, with the schools in this area, with the rooftops, see if we want to go three lanes, five lanes, go bicycle lanes, no bicycle lanes, and of course sidewalks. And really, what Mr. Gillis alluded to earlier, make sure that whatever we do there is the right thing for the, for the residents. I can tell you from a traffic standpoint, our last numbers show that it's borderline as far as a three to a five-lane, needing a three to a five-lane section. You know, sometimes, as you guys know, traffic studies are not always science, they're sometimes as much just educational, look into the future as to, as to what the traffic's going to be like. But certainly, this area is, is built out quite a bit. We're also looking at improvements on Thompson Lane, the possibility or ways to divert traffic off of Thompson Lane with another interchange. And so, you know, those types of long-term improvements, we'd have to look at that in the, in the overall traffic system here.
My main concern, much like we discussed Greenland Drive, you know, a couple of months ago, it just doesn't make sense to spend a ton of money putting a Band-Aid on a problem that we're going to have to talk about later on down the line.
We realize that the, you know, the improvements to Haynes Drive are going to take, you know, a good amount of public input and study on the three-lane versus the five-lane, but we also recognize that that road right now is in very poor condition, and it does need to be resurfaced. We saw this as an opportunity to do a smaller project to deal with the safety issue of the car sliding off the road by adding that banking or that super elevation. So we were trying to do something that we could do in the short term and then take a more studied approach on the longer-term issue.
And I know no one likes to talk about road widening. I mean, I know when we, we spent a lot of time on the Jarnet Lane in neighborhood meetings and talking with people who did not want the Jarnet Lane widened. So, you know, I know that, especially for staff, that's not a fun project to take, to handle, but.
Well, I think we appreciate the, the feedback and appreciate people's interests. Obviously, people that live there have a great investment, that's probably the biggest investment they make. So we are, everything we do with these, we certainly want to take that into consideration and don't mind spending more time with the residents out there before the council makes a decision on this.
I think it's a great idea to be as informed as you can, and of course, you know, this was an old county road at one time, and we kind of grew into it and trying to look at what we could do with the future. One thing that I had thought about, and you may want to come up with several options we consider, I agree with what Mr. Gillis and some of the residents said, that, you know, the speed is an issue, especially at that intersection. I don't know if you've thought about it or even considered putting maybe a roundabout at that location. And that would be an effective slowing mechanism that would slow everybody down from all directions and, and, and it just, it may not work, but it's.
Sure.
Just look at different options, if you will.
Sure. We will certainly do that.
Okay. Council members, what are your wishes?
Vice Mayor, I would move we defer until we get back from the city engineer after he gets feedback from having a public meeting with the neighbors who are affected.
Second.
Motion, second. Any other questions or comments? Colorado Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
The second item I have for tonight is the appraisals and property acquisition for Joby Jackson Parkway extension. Our consultant, Wiser Company, is to determine the amount of right-of-way and/or easements required for the construction of improvements from, for Joby Jackson Parkway from I-24 to US-231. I've included a copy of a map detailing the limits of improvements for your use. We've contacted five TDOT-approved firms to provide a proposal for appraisal, review appraisal, and relocation services for this project. Staff anticipates at least one residential property owner will have to be relocated as part of this, this project. Two firms, which were well-qualified with extensive work experience in Rutherford County, submitted proposals. Staff recommends accepting the proposal from Carol Crofton Associates to complete 37 appraisals for the properties and perform relocations for the affected properties for an estimated fee of $81,700 with a delivery time of 120 days. We note this project is partially funded by TDOT, and this requires meeting their appraisal, review appraisal requirement. A copy of the comparison of the proposals is attached for your review. Additionally, we've got 15 parcels which will require temporary construction easements only. We recommend using values obtained from the appraisals and staff completing the TDOT's nominal payment parcel, the NPP form, as mentioned previously, to determine the value of the easement required from each property. After we've received the appraisals or the NPP forms for the acquisitions required, we propose to purchase the required property and/or easements from the owners as outlined below. If the offer is not acceptable to the property owner, the legal department would then file condemnation with the actual value being deposited into court. We recommend approval to proceed with the appraisals and acquisitions in the manner outlined above with funding from the TML loan. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Any questions from the council? Before we get started, council members, I would, I know we all have probably received an email, I think it's circulated through staff as well, from Mr. Craig, and it's asking about a different proposal or different recommendation, and there's also was a petition with him. Mr. Lyons, have you got this, or this need to be part of the record, or?
Yes, sir. It was forwarded to me yesterday, and staff will be reviewing that and preparing a response.
Okay. Just want to make sure that everyone knows that that was part of the record from Mr. Craig. It's a petition and a different, asking for us to look at a different route or different proposal. So, anyway. Questions from the council to Mr. Griffith concerning this, this issue? Give the council time to, maybe Mr. McFarland hasn't seen that petition, but. Mr. Griffith, you had time to look at that concern or question. What is, could you give us an overview of, of your thoughts of that? Have you had time to do that?
I have, I received it this morning and had a chance just to look at it briefly. It's, always we look at the possibility of going to one side or the other whenever we're widening a roadway. We find that, that more times than not, it's typically better to, to go basically down the center of the roadway and to take from either side. I can tell you that this project, I guess we started back in 2000 with an advance planning report on this. This is partially federally funded. We really feel like, and it's not federally funded, but funded by TDOT. Our initial feeling is that we, we really prefer the alignment going down the middle of the road. When you go too far to one side or the other, a lot of times you wind up with, with large remnants that are difficult to develop. I think the latter made mention of possible commercial development or, or something of that nature. We sometimes struggle with that, and you wind up having to just look for the right situation to, to bring properties together. Really, the, you know, looking at this, the traffic on it is, is, is not as high as one would, would expect. And I would think that, just my initial thought to it, just looking at it today, which I'll be glad to go back through the information, but we would prefer to stay with the current alignment.
Any questions from the, for the council? One of my questions, I guess, that I would have is, is, you know, anytime we look at a road widening projects, obviously, they're all, as Mr. McFarland mentioned, they're always difficult for those individuals who are personally impacted. But we're in a growing city and growing community, and I think we'll all agree that one of, our most frequent comment is. one of, our most frequent comment is, is traffic and how we, how we have to, uh, manage that traffic and, and, uh, look at it. What, what came first for us, the homes or the, the planning of the road? That would be...
That would, uh, that would probably be a, uh, Joseph Adebah Lot, since this road and the location actually precedes me, uh, Joseph might be a little bit better. I can tell you that it's been on our major thoroughfare plan since ninety-seven, Joseph, or around ninety-seven. Joseph may have a little bit more information as far as the subdivision.
Vice Mayor Bratcher, the, um, road was on our major thoroughfare plan before the subdivision was conceived, and that's why the little section of the road was named Joby Jackson Parkway, along with the, the subdivision. Uh, in fact, if you look just to the west, you see County Farm Road, although it was an extension of County Farm Road, it was named Joby Jackson Parkway in anticipation of the street eventually connecting on the cross.
I might add, um, also, uh, obviously, if we go to one side or the other, um, uh, the cost began to go up significantly. Uh, you start not only beginning to buy structures, uh, the houses that's involved, but you also, uh, it also requires the relocation of, uh, you know, we have one relocation of, of a residence now, maybe two, we would, you know, we would up that to ten to fifteen, uh, which would obviously be a significant impact to, uh, to the folks that live there.
Any other questions from the council? What are your wishes?
I will move that we approve the recommendations of the city engineer.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any other questions or comments from the council? Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Uh, the final item I have for you tonight is the construction and testing services for the Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. Um, I hope everyone's had a chance to go out and see that construction is underway on that. Uh, it's a very exciting, um, building for the city and, and we look forward to its completion. Uh, our consultant, Hart Freeland Roberts, uh, requested proposals from three qualified firms to provide construction observation and testing services for the proposed, uh, Vis-, Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center. I've got a, a list of the three firms and their estimated fees in my, in my letter to you. Uh, staff recommends accepting the proposal from Core Properties. Core has extensive construction experience in immediate vicinity. Uh, they've done both road projects that we've, uh, we've completed in the area, Medical Center Parkway and, uh, Gresham Park Drive, um, a- and they also, uh, basically keep a construction technician in Murfreesboro, which makes them more accessible and it also cuts down on any, uh, travel expenses that the, the city may incur. Uh, we've, we've attached a copy of their proposal for your review and we recommend acceptance of Core's proposal, subject to review by the city attorney, with funding to be an approximate thirty-six to sixty-four percent split between federal and local dollars, with the local funding coming from the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, let me mention specifically this, uh, obviously, we have inspectors on site and we do, uh, a lot of the inspection work ourselves. This is specifically for, um, for density, uh, testing, for actually building construction, uh, type testing, uh, breaking of concrete cylinders, uh, checking footings, things like that. It's not necessarily roadway, roadway related, it's more
It's like a PSI test?
Yes, yes. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from, uh, from Mr. Griffith on this test, on this project? You Visitor Center, Chamber of Commerce?
Move we approve the recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Next item is our beer permits, and I think I noticed three on our desk, is that right, Ms. Wright?
There should be four.
Four?
There is a fourth.
Okay, you can see the fourth one.
All four of these are, uh, conditional requests, once they pass their final building code inspections, which all three should be very close, some are scheduled for tomorrow and some for Monday. They would like to go ahead and have the opportunity to open if they are able to pass those successfully. We have a convenience store at three-three-two-five-C Memorial Boulevard, which is a new location. We have a convenience store at two-one-two-two Thompson Lane, Suite E, which is also a new location. We have a restaurant and club at three-oh-two West Main Street, which is an ownership change and a name change, and, uh, a deli and brew house at two-two-three that should be West Main, that's a table where it says East Main, that's an ownership change and a name change. And they've met our other requirements, other than the codes inspections.
Okay, council members, you heard the request for these four permits, when they meet the requirements? Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Next, any other business come before?
Bills.
Oh, yeah, payment of statements, we have a new list of statements on your desk. Council members, you have the, uh, payment of statements and there is a new list on your desk, so entertain a motion to pay the bills.
So moved. Seven.
Have a motion is second to pay the statements. Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Next, consider any other business come for the council from the staff or the city council. Thank you, uh, Mr. Gilbert, welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I have one item for your consideration this evening, and that is an agreement, uh, for an architectural contract between, uh, the City of Murfreesboro and Johnson and Bailey and Associates. Uh, that is for the renovation of both the indoor and outdoor pools at Sportscom. And of course, most of you know, Sportscom was opened in nineteen-eighty-seven, some twenty-two years ago, and since that time, we've had thousands of people using that facility. And it's what I call kind of a victim of its own success. It's, uh, in other words, it's kind of worn out. And the, looking at the pools, uh, the standard life for a pool is somewhere around fifteen to twenty years. And of course, the outdoor pool, I want to go through it first, is probably in the worst shape. It, uh, if you look at the letter that I submitted to you for this item, it has things like decks that are sinking around the swimming pool, the filtration system and the circulation system, which is the pipes above and below the ground or in, in poor condition. Matter of fact, last year, uh, we had to do some pretty extensive work to our filtering system, and I can tell you that, uh, we operated pretty much on, on a prayer, trying to get that through. Mr. Nate Williams, our aquatics coordinator, who is sitting here, I know he pretty much held his breath all summer, hoping that, uh, that pool did not fail. Uh, if it had of, we would have lost the entire pool season. Uh, and looking at, uh, whether we can operate that pool again this year and evaluating whether it would be more prudent to go ahead and do the renovations at this time or, or try to get the pool for another season, our recommendation would be to go ahead with the renovations at this time. Uh, also, we would like to couple in there the indoor pool. The indoor pool suffers from many of the same symptoms, I guess you would say, as the outdoor pu-, as the outdoor pool does. Um, but one of the things that we're proposing in this, uh, uh, this renovation is to make a structural change to the outdoor pool. Matter of fact, what we're recommending is that we go to what's called an outdoor waterpark setting, which will have many features, and Mr. Lau Lynch is here from Johnson and Bailey, and he's going to go over those in just a minute. I think this is really exciting for the community. I think it's going to add some new dimension to our recreation department, and I know that it will provide us more revenue to help offset the operations of that particular venue. Uh, one of the other things that I want to mention and that I included in your packet is the construction schedule. And you can go through and you can see what we're proposing, it's a very aggressive schedule, and you can see where we're proposing that the construction be finished at, on May the twenty-seventh of next year. Now, that coincides with what we traditionally open the pool, which is Memorial Day. Now, I can tell you right up front that we had a conversation with Councilman Huntsaker, who is the firm that Johnson and Bailey will be working with, and they are a pool consultant. Uh, they are pretty much nationwide recognized as one of the top pool consultants in the country. Uh, they did tell us that that was a very aggressive schedule. Uh, they said, when we asked if we had equipment that may not come in on time or if we had weather conditions, what were we looking at in terms of delay? They were talking anywhere from two to four weeks, which we were a little, I think, surprised with and thinking that if we lose two weeks on the front end of the season, I think that's a lower risk than getting into the season with the old pool, maybe going two or three weeks and then losing the rest of the season. So, um, the, what we would do is, we would go into the construction of the outdoor pool and we would complete that construction before we would start any construction on the indoor pool. After the construction of the outdoor pool is complete, we would wait a week or two, start that construction, hopefully sometime around the first of the summer, and we would like to have that completed sometime around the end of the Aug-, August first of September. Uh, we would not close the outdoor pool until the indoor pool construction would be finished. That way, we would always have some type of pool for our citizens. To go over the construction cost, the estimated construction cost of both renovation of the indoor and the outdoor pool is estimated at two million, eight hundred, nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Based on that estimated cost, the estimated cost of the architectural engineering services would be two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars, bringing the total project to three million, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Currently, in our capital outlay, we have three million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars allocated for these renovations. To move forward, like I say, with this very aggressive schedule, uh, it would require going ahead and approving the contract for architectural engineering services with Johnson and Bailey for two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars, and it does include all of the pool consultant and design fees, uh, the architectural services and all the related engineering services. I do want to say that we were given an architectural engineering contract yesterday. We did take it to legal, and, uh, Ms. McGinnan was out yesterday, she got it in her hands this morning. Uh, she has not completed the review of that, uh, contract, and we would ask that if the council does consider, uh, approval of that contract, that would be contingent upon any modifications or additions or corrections that Ms. McGinnan would make to that contract. At this time, what I'd like to do is just yield the floor to Mr. Lynch and let him come forward and talk about what we are proposing for the outdoor pool and what modifications we're going to do at the indoor pool. Mr. Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Welcome, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you very much. Um, the renovations to the indoor pool would be mostly rejuvenation. It's over a twenty-year-old facility. The, uh, deck around the indoor pool has some puddles where some areas have settled and they hold water. Uh, we would be, uh, replacing the concrete in those areas, and then we're replacing, uh, putting a, it's a cool deck surface, it's called. It's an epoxy surface on top of the existing concrete. Uh, the concrete's just old, it's discolored, and we're going to have to saw up certain areas of the concrete in order to get some plumbing and mechanical systems in. Of course, the, uh, indoor pool renovations include, uh, complete replacement of the filtration system. Uh, also, keep in mind, the newer filtration systems are run a lot more efficiently than, uh, twenty-year-old versions, they've come a long way since then. Um, the, the fun stuff starts outside, because, uh, that's where we're looking at something beyond what we, uh, what we currently have out there. The western, as you see on the site plan, one-third of the pool area would be a reuse of the existing pool shell. Uh, in both the indoor and the outdoor pool, uh, the renovations would include, uh, sandblasting all the existing paint, which is, uh, probably twenty-two coats of paint now, uh, off the shell, sealing the cracks with epoxy compound and, uh, putting an epoxy spray on top of the pool shell. And, uh, then as you look at that and, and proceed to the east, you can, uh, see that it's an expansion of the existing pool. There's a dotted line there showing the location of the existing waiting pool, so that'll give you an idea of, uh, the scope of the expansion. Um, this outdoor pool, uh, will provide recreation for all ages. Uh, starting in the lower right corner, the, um, the southeast corner, we want to put in a spray ground. A spray ground is a structure where it has, uh, special play features where water is sprayed out and it's intended for the youngest children. Uh, then we want a zero, we propose a zero-entry-depth pool that has a playground in the middle of it.
Is it spray, is it, is this what you're talking about?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about, that's a spray ground. And that's just a prototypical sample, uh, each one's a little bit different with, uh, unique features, uh, particular to that site. Uh, but that's an example, uh, that was photographed by the pool consultant, Councilman Huntsinger, of what can be done in that area. Then we proceed to zero, uh, entry pool with a playground in the middle, and again, that's for slightly older kids, uh, with a little bit deeper water, and then a play pool with a volleyball net down the middle, some play structures on the side and some, uh, and they call them candy canes, but they're, and, and that's what you see there on the east side. Um, and there are also spray features that, uh, the recirculated water sprays out through those. This can be a really nice pool. Um, proceeding on, you see the, um, uh, the curly figure there at the, um, south middle portion would be the dual slide, one would be open and one would be closed. Uh, and then there's a slide pool that you end up with at the bottom of that slide. Again, we're proceeding from the younger kids to the older, older people. Um, there's a diving pool, and the, the feature you see on the south end of the diving pool is a rock climbing wall. It's similar to what we have at MTSU, only the difference is, when you fall, you fall into a fairly deep portion of the pool. Um, there's also a drop slide, and the diving board would have to be replaced because currently it's a one-meter diving board and current aquatic codes require that that be lowered to three-quarter meter for the depth of water that's at the facility now. And then the remaining, uh, western, uh, third of the pool would be the existing shell renovated, uh, and that would be retained for lap swim. So you have everything from the toddlers down here in the spray ground to people my age on the, uh, lap pool, uh, and there's features there for, for all ages, and I think this can be a big, uh, traction and greatly increase the, uh, use of this facility out there. And with that, I'll entertain questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Any questions from Mr. Lynch? Uh, I know this is a, a, a new and exciting project. I know Councilman McFarland, who's on the Parks and Recreation Commission, has really, uh, pushed this at, at that level, to, to get this to, I think, to the council, so, um, that's a pretty aggressive time schedule. How, how do you feel about the, about the timeframe?
Uh, I feel that it is very aggressive, as you said. Uh, if anyone here can control the weather, that would be a big help, because, uh, we're, we're starting work at a fairly inclement time of, of year. Um, uh, the consultant that we proposed to use, Councilman Huntsinger, has extensive experience in pools, they've built over four hundred pools, uh, from coast to coast. And again, we've consulted with them, uh, who would be a little more knowledgeable about that issue, and they brought that up, that the schedule's very aggressive.
One of the things we may do to try to, you know, realize that we'll be, you know, starting construction, um, in, in February, is, once the project is designed, um, one of the things that's going to require some lead time will be the climbing wall, the place- going to require some lead time will be the climbing wall, the play structures, and the slides. We may actually have that bid out separately to get that order processed and that beginning to be fabricated. Meanwhile, while the, the general contractor would be constructing the pool, we would then deliver the, the play structures and so forth to the contractor and let them install that. So we may try to pick up some time so that it can be completed, but, but it is an aggressive schedule, and we'll, we'll be keeping you up to date on how that goes, but we certainly will be dependent upon the weather.
That's part of the situation with coming to y'all tonight with a recommendation on the architectural agreement, is that we have proposed, we have provided some services at this time as the architect, but a large, very large portion of the architectural fee goes to the pool designer, which is a big part of the work. And we, to keep the schedule going, we need to get them started Monday morning, and I'll need a contract before I can get them.
Contingent on Ms. McGannon's approval, right? Any other questions from the council to either Mr. Lynch, or Mr. Gilbert, or Mr. Williams?
Mr. Gilbert, this is under, or Mr. Lynch, under what we had budgeted for our capital outlay on the project, is that?
Well, we talk about it being an aggressive schedule. One thing's for certain, there's not going to be a meeting if we don't let them get started. So I move we approve the recommendation, subject to approval by legal.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other questions from the council? Colorado Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Lynch, and Nate Williams, thank you. Appreciate it.
We've got another item, Vice Mayor Bratcher?
I think we have Mr. Whitaker coming to the podium. He has an item, I think, he wants to present.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Mr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. The city had made application for an energy conservation block grant a few weeks ago. We have received notice that we got approval for that grant, which is good news. We, part of the recommendation, or the requirement, rather, in, in obtaining that grant, is we have to submit a conservation strategy to the federal government for the rest of that money. They approved $250,000 of the grant, of the total $961,100 grant, and to get the remainder, we have to submit this strategy. We have a proposal before you to, from Griggs and Maloney, to help us in creating that strategy. The strategy is actually the heart and soul of this, if you will. It basically outlines how the money would be spent, the energy conservation of it, the carbon footprint reduction, the energy reduction, so it's a, it's a pretty lengthy document that has to be turned in. So we had looked to a professional to help us with that, and again, Griggs and Maloney has given us a proposal for time and material, and also not to exceed $47,000. One thing I'd like to point out is, that document has to be back in their hands no later than December the 15th. Unfortunately, we didn't receive official notice until a few weeks ago that we actually had this, or had been approved. They didn't give us official notice of that, so we're under somewhat of a time constraint here to get this in and get it to them.
You're, you're on a more aggressive schedule than the swimming pool, right?
Unfortunately, yes, sir. And what we're asking for tonight is consider this proposal, and if the council is okay and approves it, then we will start with the strategy. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Whitaker concerning this energy efficient block grant, conservation block grant? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Colorado Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. You can go to work. Any other business? Ms. McGannon?
Vice Mayor, I'm presenting on behalf of Mr. Richardson, the agreement between the city and the Regional Transportation Authority that you had on your table tonight. As you know, we've received money from the federal government for various transportation improvements. A description of how much and what is to be used for is found on the first page of the agreement, which is the second page of the material you've got before you. As you see, they're very substantive sums that we are working with the Regional Transportation Authority to spend, and this agreement to, was created by staff to clearly delineate the roles of the city and the RTA with respect to this federal funding. In addition to my review, it was reviewed by Ms. Wright and Ms. Tucker to make sure that the complicated federal grant requirements, we'd be able to track financially, and so staff recommends its approval to you.
Any questions from Ms. McGannon concerning this issue?
Vice Mayor, I move we approve her recommendation.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the recommendation. Colorado Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Any other business coming for the council? Comments? Announcements? Seeing none, we stand adjourned.